Good evening. Welcome to the December 11th, very special Village Board Work Session. This meeting is called to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're very excited to have our board meeting that is dedicated to the terrific volunteers of all of our boards, councils, commissions, and committees here in the Village of Ossining. We have dozens and dozens of folks who are appointed to serve in various capacities, and all of these volunteers focus on a particular aspect of village life. And in some cases, like some of our land use boards, they have a deeper understanding and implementation of our local land use laws. And in other cases, whether it's the arts or the EAC, Environmental Advisory Council sort of has a both advisory and most of them are advisory roles. They may advise us on ways that we can improve our downtown local economy. They may be helping to connect artists to have a more enriching artist community here in Ossining. Wherever their area of focus is, these groups advise us and help village government to better serve the needs of our community. And we are just very, very grateful for your service and looking forward to learning about what you've experienced in the last year, what you're anticipating for next year, and tell us how we can do a better job at supporting you in fulfilling your mission. And I want to say a special thank you to Trustee Levin because ever since she came on the board, she's been particularly focused on getting some of our boards that had been less active, getting them reconstituted with engaged, active members. And we focused a lot of attention on that. And then also just say thank you. We talked about doing a thank you last year, but this year, at your urging, we are actually doing it. So we're grateful to have so many of you here tonight to fill us in on what you've been up to. Do you want to comment, Megan?
Yeah. Good evening. I hope everybody on this side can see us equally well. So, thank you. And just to add to that, there are a couple of sort of purposes to this. Not only will the public be able to get short snapshots of what the committees do, you know, a lot of people that enter the political realm do it through sitting on a committee. It's also a great place for people to meet one another who have some sort of a vertical interest, an environment, a community center, whatever. And it's a great opportunity. So I want to take this opportunity, for those that are watching, you know, to please join. Some of these committees have got lots and lots of resumes for upwards of, I think, 50 for some of the openings, but every year, you know, we want to refresh, we want to build pipelines, take the opportunity to also meet one another, at least, you know, as you're sitting in the room and asking about stuff. I think that's great, and I think it's a great way because so many of the committees also work with the staff. We have great staff in this community, and they don't oftentimes are in front. They'll oftentimes sort of take in problems, communications, and take care of our streets and the garbage and a lot of stuff. But the committees are a place where I think citizens and residents and businesses have an opportunity to also have some interaction with the staff, which for me has been really enjoyable, and I think it creates these one-on-one relationships. So I want to thank everybody who's representing committees, but also encourage others to take the opportunity to maybe join one of these committees. Thanks.
So we're going to get started with the Arts, the Ossining Arts Project. So it's Bradley Morrison that comes up, and apparently gives us a handout. Oh, boy.
It's a showing up.
I would just give folks an update because Trustee Levin mentioned applying, and we have been doing interviews, we're still conducting interviews, and the five of us will have a conversation where we are starting conversations about new appointments for the new year. Sometimes folks leave a committee for whatever reason, their life gets complicated, they move away, or they get term limited out. So we have vacancies that come throughout the year, but right now we're concentrating on filling as many as we can so they can start fresh in the new year. The Ossining Arts Project. Bradley Morrison.
It's up to you. You're welcome to stand if you'd like.
So thank you Mayor Garrity and your trustees for inviting us here tonight. We really appreciate being able to come and talk about what we do and a little bit about us. I have a few extras if any of you are interested here. But just to give you an idea, I'll share with everyone our mission. First is that the Arts Projects, Ossining Arts Projects is a village-appointed committee, and we're all volunteers. Our mission is to forge a cohesive link between all of the arts groups and individual artists in Ossining, enabling them to work together more efficiently and effectively, and to use this synergy to nurture the arts in Ossining, establishing that as a creative artistic hub. And so, one of our, we've had two real main focuses this year. First, very much in line with our mission, has been running a number of networking events throughout the community. We had three this year. One was held at the Michael Risco Music School, another was at the Westchester Collaborative Theater, and our first one for the year was at the Elks Lodge. And really, just events to bring artists of all sorts together, create that network of artists to be able to reach out to each other, talk to each other about their work, and maybe even work on some collaborations. We are, we just got word recently of two artists who met at one of our collaborative events, Ted Daniels, a musician that many of you are probably familiar with, and Tomiko, whose last name I'm blanking on at the moment, a dancer from the community, Staba. I think she's on the last name, Rob's wife.
We all know who that is.
We all know who it is. Good.
Tomiko.
Tomiko, yeah, I can't remember her last name. But they're doing a collaboration, original choreography and music, and they'll be performing here in the Bud Arts Theater in January and February, so you should keep an eye out for that. And that right there is a product of our community work. And something else that we're starting to work on, and I ask you all to kind of be familiar with it, because we're going to be coming to you hopefully during 2020 with some more information and some requests about it, and that is the work towards creating Ossining as a place where public arts are more easily accessible as viewers and appreciators of art, and also easier to make for artists to do. And we have an idea of an arts corridor kind of running through the center of town, connecting the waterfront up to Market Square, up to Roosevelt Square, and maybe beyond into the town up to Bethany or something like that. So we will be sort of examining some things that we might need to bring this idea, flesh it out more, and bring it a little bit more to life. And I will be remiss if I didn't thank the people who are on the committee. So with us tonight, we have our social media publications chair, Wendy LeMecque. Our vice chair is Jessica Irons, who's going to be here, but I think she's running a little late. And our secretary is Lindsay Francis. Then we also have Michelle Herco, Alan Lutwin, Peggy Manastro, Michael Morales, Mike Risco, and Henry Welt. And I would like to publicly put out a huge thank you to Michelle Herco, Michael Morales, and Henry Welt, who will not be, who are retiring from the committee at the end of this year, and put out again the echo the request that anybody who's interested in doing this sort of work should totally apply and be a part of the work, because it's a lot of fun and really fulfilling, and something that's going to bring a lot of wealth of all sorts to the community. So thank you all for supporting it.
Bradley, well done. Was that, I think that was four minutes. It was like almost, that was perfect. Well done, Bradley, and some thoughtfully presented. So there, that's a challenge for everyone else. A plus for Bradley, nice job. And you also remind me to just let folks know, after we hear, we'll hear from each committee chair or designee, and then after that, we have a certificate for everyone who is here and everyone who is not here will get the certificates then afterwards. And that includes the folks who are going to be retiring, as you say, from their single list. Thank you very much, Bradley. Next up, we have the, I don't see, Peter Madison here, and I'm just not seeing him. So the Board of Ethics, we're going to skip for now. Sharon Verdeho, would you please join us and tell us about what's happening with the Civilian Police Complaint Review Board? Now Sharon, I know you have been a member of the Civilian Police Complaint Review Board for a number of years, so you have some institutional knowledge for us, but we're looking forward to hearing your report this evening. Jamie will prompt you with two-minute warnings and one-minute warnings if you start to, if you start to go a little over there.
We've done this before.
Hi, my name is Sharon Verdeho, and I'm the chairperson of the Civilian Police Complaint Review Board. We have been around for a number of years. I've been on the committee for a number of years. It is comprised of four civilians and one alternate, two police officers, and then two police officer alternates. We meet monthly, and basically, we review formal complaints against police officers, whether it's something that was perceived as done wrong, whether it was, for example, we had a complaint of a false arrest, a complaint of poor service, a complaint of a motorist claiming to have been followed, and we had a few complaints about rude and unprofessional actions. I have to say, in this world now, with the body cameras that they use and the audio, it has made everything so much easier, because we basically had to sit at a table and talk about he said, she said. Because when a formal complaint is made, it is reviewed by the police department, and that is brought to us as long as there are no charges pending. And we would review it and take into consideration the actions by the police department towards this police officer, maybe offer some suggestions like verbal judo, which is something they run their officers through. Like I said, we met once a month, and if there weren't any complaints, because believe it or not, there's not always complaints to review, we would go through various types of training. The last training I went through was firearms training. So they do try to get their members involved. They go over the laws, they go over the handling of firearms, they explain all of the procedures so that everybody's fully informed and knows the rights of the police officer. This year, we only had nine complaints total. So it's my understanding that several of the members are retiring, so I think if anybody's interested...
We've got some great out.
Great, great. It's a really important committee, and hopefully it will keep running. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sharon.
Thank you.
Well, Sharon is keeping this really great track record of people staying under the five-minute mark. Well done. And I just wanted to let folks know, we have a number of presenters, and our next one is going to be Jeff Gasparo for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Jeff? Oh, he's writing a note. Okay. I'll just, as Jeff is getting his notes together to come up here, I'll just say, we'll listen to all of the presentations, and then if the board members have any questions or comments, hopefully they're represented as well, stick around so you can give us some feedback, and then we'll do the certifications.
Welcome, and thank you Mayor Victoria Garrity and trustees for having us. And I was actually just writing down the names of our members so that I didn't miss anybody. So I'm representing the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. I was going to say that this committee is sort of in its infancy, but then I've started to make a list of everything we've done, and we're maybe more of a toddler. But we've done quite a bit. And let me just say a little bit about the comprehensive plan. The last comprehensive plan done by the village was in 2009, and that comprehensive plan was supposed to last for five years. And so here we are now, 10 years later, and we're doing this. But I think this is a really great time to be doing that. I think that there's a lot of exciting things happening in our community. And just for people who don't know what a comprehensive plan is, a comprehensive plan is the document that contains all of our, the vision of our community and the strategies for how to implement that around land use, housing, the environment, and infrastructure issues, things along those lines. So let me just tell you a little bit about what our committee's done since we formed. I think we had our first meeting in September. We reviewed and discussed the previous comprehensive plan. We met with the Pace Land Use Law Center, a team from them, and they've delivered to us a public engagement plan. One of the most important parts about the comprehensive plan is to maximize public engagement, to get the most input from different stakeholders in the community. And that lays out a set of strategies for how we can engage with the community, to bring all those voices in through the process. We reviewed and made edits to a request for proposals to bring in a lead planner who will do a lot of studies and run some of the public workshops that are part of this process, and we received responses from several well-known planning firms. And our village manager, Karen Dettori, is right now working with a nonprofit called Patterns for Progress. And Patterns for Progress is helping us score the proposals we receive from those planning firms to help us make the best recommendation to the board about who can best help us go through this process. And so that's sort of where we are right now. One of the, one of the things that I wanted to ask as part of this evening was to ask, to tell you, the board, what you can do to support us. And one of the things I would say is to become, I have a copy of it, become familiar with the public engagement, public participation plan that Pace produced for us is an excellent document, and has a timeline of, a timeline of how this process can unfold, it has different strategies for engaging with stakeholders, and some, there's specific roles in here right now for the Board of Trustees. Some are for the mayor to write, for instance, a personalized letter to stakeholders on the county or state level, asking them to become involved. And we're going to be wanting to use social media and at every public event, we would hope that all our elected officials and all the other land use boards would let the community know that this is coming down the road. So lastly, I'll just mention all our members, Mayor Garrity, Trustee Bazemore, Melissa Banta, Becky Feigh, who's here tonight, Omar Lopez, Ro Moran, Palo Torres, and Sheila Marine Massaville. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just, I'll just distinguish the, thank you, Jeff. It is a really interesting committee. It's also a little different than the other committees, because it is not intended to exist forever. It is, it is a steering committee that has been created to take us through this comprehensive plan update, which has a timeline, and we're all going to try and stick to that timeline of 12 to 18 months. It's an update, it's not starting from scratch, because we do have a baseline of our current plan. Okay, I don't think we're able to have anybody from the Downtown Open Fund Council here tonight, so we are moving on to, Kate, get ready, it's the Environmental Advisory Council. And we've actually heard from the Environmental Advisory Council recently, so we've got a very in-depth insight, so this is just going to be a little overview of the last year and next year. Here you go, Kate. Keep it short. You've got a lot of pressure on. Everybody else has been four minutes ago. Blah.
Don't be intimidated.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Hi, everyone. Kate Schlot, I'm here on behalf of the Village Environmental Advisory Council. So I'm just going to walk you through what we are responsible for, what we've been working on for 2019, and what our plans are for 2020 in the coming months. So the Environmental Advisory Council, we advise the Board of Trustees on matters affecting, matters affecting the preservation, development, and use of the natural and man-made features and conditions of the village. We conduct studies, surveys, and inventories of the village's natural and man-made features, and we maintain an up-to-date inventory of all open spaces within the village, maintain communications with public and private agencies whose activities have an impact on the quality on the environment within the Village of Ossining. So keeping in mind what is stated in our comprehensive plan and what we have in our codes, the EAC has conducted project reviews. So we've looked at projects that are not included but not limited to Hudson Step, we've looked at Atria Expansion, we've reviewed plans for the village pier extension, and one of the recent projects that we've seen is for the St. St. Louis Prison Museum, which is one of the projects that we're very excited for, and hope to see more coming from them in the coming months. As part of the comprehensive plan, we are conducting an open space inventory. So we've been in the preliminary stages of figuring out where our open spaces actually are. So we are creating an inventory of public and private open spaces, and we're creating a tiered list of how we actually want to classify our open space within the village. And we also will work with the Town of Ossining's Environmental Advisory Council to look at their open space projects, what their plans are, and some of the special projects that they have coming up as well. We've been pushing for a native plant protocol. We look at the importance of having native plant species, specifically non-invasive native plant species. So we actually recently had a link to the native plants of Westchester County put up on the village website. And in the spring, we had a plan to get information out to the public, to try to get homeowners who, when they start doing their gardening and their planting in the backyard, to understand the importance of having non-invasive plant species and getting samples and information out to the public regarding that project. So that we will have. Also, we're creating a PDF that house owners will actually have a list of plants that they can refer to, so that they don't feel overwhelmed with this huge list of things to look through. So maybe we'll give them some suggestions for things that can be great pollinators in their backyards as well. We are also looking at public outreach for 2020. So we actually have meetings with the Town Environmental Advisory Council coming up in the first week of January, and we are going to plan some stuff for the 2020 Ossining Village Fair, as well as Green Ossining's 2020 Earth Day Festival. So we'll have samples of things to give out, we'll have information, paperless information, so we're very concerned, make sure we don't, well, we know that putting the flyers, it causes a problem in the sewers after these events happen. So we're trying to mitigate whatever damages we actually do put on the environment when we have our big festivals as well. So the Board of Trustees actually has been very helpful in getting us some of the resources that we need to conduct the open space inventory. So coming up in the summer, when we actually have everything in bloom, we can get an idea of what the ecological relationships are within some of our open spaces as well, to see the importance of these, of these spaces and keeping them preserved for future, future generations. So thank you for your time. We actually, we are a six-person committee at the moment, and just to give a quick hello and a shout out, Erica Bosch, Leilani Dooley, Jessica Hewlett, Luis Cortino, Tom Golan, and myself are currently serving on the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's wonderful. Very well done, very well done. Thank you so much. The EAC has a special place in my heart, because that was my first official position in village government. I served on the EAC before running for village trustee. Okay, Steve Dewey, are you ready? So Steve is the chair of the Landlord Lieutenant Relations Council. I see he has at least one of his fellow council members here this evening, Loa of Thuma. The Landlord Lieutenant Relations Council is something unique to Ossining, and it's existed for about 30 years, but just a couple of years ago, trustees Levin and Bazemore served on a subcommittee to review its effectiveness and to strengthen its effectiveness and give it a little more teeth. And the revamped, new and improved Landlord Lieutenant Relations Council has been doing some really tangible things. In fact, one of them took place right here in this room, and part of their mission is educating the public. So they did a presentation, an in-depth Q and A, talking about the new state regulations that impact landlords and tenants, and as well as just letting people know that you're here. And so I will turn the mic over to you, and you can tell people all the great stuff you've been doing.
Well, good evening. Since you just said everything that we did this year, I'll, that's my five minutes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Dewey. Thank you to the board, and you know, we are the Landlord Lieutenant Relations Council. We just got our 12th matter in two days ago, and I'd like to thank, first of all, Trustee Bazemore is one of the first trustees that helped to get this revamped. This council's been in the village existence for many years. There's actually part of the village code that gives us authority with this council, but it was really kind of dormant, and Trustee Bazemore than Trustee Levin and now Trustee Casada have helped to get us back on track. We are now a member of a crew of nine volunteers. We need four, so all these other councils, thanks for being here, but I need four. That's got to happen first. We're very active, because a lot of our matters that we do involve a real person and a real situation now. And it's been very interesting, a lot, lot more involved than I actually thought it would happen. Last year, we had about 18, 19 cases. This year, we're already up to 12. We ask and remind people that we are not illegal council. We cannot give illegal representation in the courts. One of our promotions next year will be we're working with the Ossining Village Court to actually have more of a presence there for mediation, which we will do for you. We have, we have intakes for both landlords and tenants, so it isn't, it's not just a tenant-only thing. And as the mayor pointed out earlier, we were glad to get our first public presentation here at the end of October. I believe it is now logged in on YouTube or on the ossiningvillageofossining.org website. You can go find that, and you'll find out, the question and answer period was much, almost twice as long as our presentation, which was a good thing, and hopefully we'll be looking to do another presentation next year. There are new laws that affect landlords and tenants, from everything from certificates of occupancy to your legal rights. We can't give you legal advice, but we can certainly direct you to the right avenue to help you and assist you. And even if you're not a landlord or tenant, if you're a neighbor to a building, if you have concerns, we've actually had one of those intakes before, we'll be glad to help you with it. But coming into this season now, we've got, one of the matters that came on was a person that lost electricity and heat, and with thanks to our council that worked for the village, Stuart Cahan and Sonia Tanksley, we'll look to remedy that situation as soon as we can. Please don't hesitate to contact us, villageofossining.org, look up the government, look under Landlord Lieutenant Relations Council, or just call the village, and they'll certainly get you in touch with us for that. Look for more people, did I mention that? Please volunteer. It's just a great organization, a council that we have, three members are landlord representatives, three are tenant, three are objective, it really doesn't matter. We've been very, very founded, well-founded in handling the matters that have come before us. We look forward to another new year, and look forward to more volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you very much. And Pat Yost, you can make your way down here, the Recreation Advisory Board will be next. And I'll say, there's an interesting makeup for the Landlord Lieutenant Relations Council that Steve mentioned, because it's nine members, three landlord tenants and three denied landlord tenants. The Recreation Advisory Board is unique in its makeup, and I don't know if you're going to talk about that a little bit? All right then, here, I'll pass over.
Excellent. So Pat Yost from Recreation Advisory Board, thanks to everybody for listening and all your support, specifically Riga, who's our liaison from the village perspective. The purpose of the Recreational Advisory Board is to work with the recreational superintendent, who is, who works for both the town and the village, actually. So the makeup of the board is we've got nine members, or nine spots, I should say, five from the village, four from the town, and the town is actually portioned, two for the village apartment manner, and two for the unincorporated areas. So there's actually some very specific, trying to get a broader perspective from everybody. We actually, going into the coming year, will actually have five vacancies, so we've got a few more. So we're going to have three from the village and two from the town. So, you know, to all those who are watching, please, you know, feel free to reach out to the village or the town, and you know, we're looking for some, some more representation. Okay? The purpose is really to kind of, as an advisory, specifically related to policies and use, related to acquisition, protection, maintenance, and enhancement of the park space within the, within the town and the village, which is actually very substantial. Additionally, also take, we also provide guidance and discussions and recommendations around use policies for both, for the recreation center as well, which is, which is a huge and fantastic asset to the community, which we're constantly talking about, how do we get the most out of that and get the most utilization from that perspective. The past year, from the kind of, a couple of key topics that we talked through, spent a lot of time around recenter operations, you know, how do we kind of get the space used, how do we get it utilized, how to make sure that we get using that on a very regular basis as much as possible, as well as all of the, like we said... As well as all of the, like we said, parks, get the best use out of those space. Talked a lot about dog park operations, which isn't so much of a village kind of issue, but it is definitely a town issue, since, you know, that's one of the things we talk a lot about. Talk a lot about the center camp, center camp operations, you know, kind of, you know, what's the programming look like, what's the standard look like? And talk a little bit about, you know, what are some opportunities for improvement as you go through and do it again next year. It's another great kind of value that's provided to the community over the course of the summer. And then finally, the last big topic that we've talked about and we expect to continue to talk about actually is like, there wasn't meant to be a youth sports organization. So there are actually some, a bunch of organizations in the town and the village that provide organizational support for, you know, soccer, basketball, youth football, you know, lacrosse, baseball and softball. And so, you know, what's it mean and, you know, what's the implication and how do you work with the town and the village to make sure that, you know, all the right requirements are being met and that you're providing the right services from that standpoint? Next year, there are kind of a couple of key discussions that we expect. You know, one, we continue to talk about, you know, the youth sports because, you know, if you add up all of the sports that I talked about, you've probably got over 1,500 kids that are involved and their services be provided for just the sports from that perspective. We're going to talk, I'm sure we'll talk some more about fees and use guidelines and, you know, how do you rent out space? Do you not rent out space? How do you use space? How do you reserve space, you know, from that perspective? The ongoing use of the recreational facilities, you know, making sure that you're doing some work related to, you know, the different facilities. And then, you know, something that we started last year that we're going to continue to do this year is we're, you know, members of Recreation Advisory Board going out to all of the park facilities. So kind of is similar to, I don't know if you want to call it an inventory, but taking a look, what's the, having discussions around what do you think the best long-term use of the spaces are. One of the things that we talked about that actually made it into the budget this year, I believe, for example, is, you know, changing Snowden, right? Providing some more soccer facilities or, you know, kind of facilities down at that space. And what that means is, you know, you take away the softball field, move that somewhere else and you turn that into something a little bit different. So we've gone and we've taken a look at that, so we've taken a look at Ryder, taken a look at Nelson, Nelson Sitting Park in Snowden. We still need to look at Cedar Lane, Crowbuckie, Gordine and Louis Angle. And we'll come together and, of course, the next few months, really kind of, you know, make some recommendations around, hey, what potential long-term uses are. So, thank you.
Very well, thank you. And next up is our, well, this board has a dual role. It's the Board of Architectural Review and the Planning Board, Frank Weldon. And Mike has been a longtime member of the Planning Board and a regular member and then became the Chair about two years ago?
Just this past year.
Thank you, Mary. Board for having us, it's very nice to be recognized. There's a lot of work that goes into planning and Board of Architectural Review. I'd like to thank all of the board members who've been very diligent this year and showing up on a regular basis. Jeff Sparrow, David Chow, Michael Aronson, Rob Baucher, I'm missing something, Alberto Fernandez, and...
Jesus.
Jesus and Kai Agam, who was there. So we've dealt with some turnover, but that's fine. It's been some good folks that have come on board. During the year, just numerous, numerous applications that come for the Board of Architectural Review, site plan, those types of things. I think I'll just kind of just hit on some of the highlights. You know, again, we're charged with administrating the building and zoning coding, as it be well. Some of the bigger things that kind of were approved this year were the atria, senior home, there was a new addition done up there. We approved the Austin Silverstone Center down on State Street, so that's actually getting built now, so that's, that's something that's very gratifying to see, you know, the building going up now and getting done. Some other projects that were sort of of sizable nature, there was a multifamily approval on Camp Woods, one on North Highland, one on program avenue. These are sort of 10, 12-unit buildings with some commercial space, so it's nice to see that, you know, we're getting the investment in the community. So those are sort of, you know, some of the pilots of the year. We stopped some very big projects that we're kind of working through. I think Hidden Cove will be back for site plan, that's on North Doris Street. So those are some of the things that have sort of happened during the year. Again, numerous projects, so you can always go on the build's website and kind of see our each meeting, I guess it's recorded, you go look and see what, you know, we do to kind of give you a sense of what's taking place. Also, I'd like to thank Jamie Kane and Stuart Khan for being, you know, there on our day-to-day basis and really kind of keeping us, you know, moving smoothly. I think it's important in Austining that we have a very good track record. You know, the development community looks very favorably upon, you know, the community. The board's always been very professional. Everything I've ever heard throughout the community's been positive. And a lot of the bigger developers, you know, land use people always, you know, are very pleased with coming to Austining because, you know, we kind of are fair. But, you know, we are concerned about health, safety and welfare. We've managed to balance both sides of the equation and, you know, everyone kind of walks away feeling like they got something and onward and upward. So that's important for the future, to keep the economic vitality of our community going. One thing about the planning and Board of Architectural Review is that whatever we approve, we'll be here for a long time after we're all gone, so it's important to get it right. Some of the things coming up in the new year, we're going to have a new land use council. Basically, Stuart's going to be stepping aside from his role of being the land use council for planning and zoning. So we're looking forward to working with the land use council. I believe it's Jim Stout and Willy Whitehead and I think Amanda Boss is in here, council. So we're looking forward to that. And also, you know, if we can kind of reimagine maybe the way we meet, we've kind of evolved this year. We used to have work sessions when we needed them. We're trying now to have work sessions before a regular meeting, but maybe the new year we can maybe have some work sessions in the downtown or sort of, you know, where all this action's happening. We kind of get a better sense of, you know, being there, being on top of things. That's kind of where we are. And once again, thank those who worked for a lot of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Adam Markovitz, you're going to be our next speaker. And I'll just point out that the Planning Board and the ZBA, who we're going to be hearing from after the HPC, and the HPC in a different way, are among the only boards that have not just an advisory role, but actually interpreting and understanding the code and weighing in on issues of land use. So, Adam, welcome.
Thank you for having us all. We appreciate it. I'm Adam Markovitz, I'm the Chair of the HPC. 2019 was a challenging year for the HPC, but I believe it's made the commission stronger and more focused in pursuing its mandates. I'll present a quick overview of the role of the HPC, the main challenge we faced in 2019, and what we have planned for the future. The HPC has three mandates. First, to review applications for certificates of appropriateness concerning proposed changes to locally landmarked properties and properties in our historic districts, namely the Main Street District and the Sparta District. Second, to identify significant historic structures and to propose landmarking such structures to the village board. Third, to increase public awareness of the importance of historic preservation. The first half of 2019 was almost entirely devoted to the consideration of the highly controversial application for certificate appropriateness, a proposal to demolish the remaining piece of the Brandrith Pill Factory complex, an 1886 office building that was spared in the demolition of the factory in 2015. Without revisiting the substance of the public hearings and the outcome of the process, all of which was very challenging for the HPC, I will say this. The demolition of the Brandrith Pill Factory complex represents perhaps the greatest loss to the historic fabric of this village since the destruction of the south side of Main Street in the 1970s. Moving forward, we cannot, as a community, permit developers lacking concern for history or architecture to reshape our village. We need to stand up for the historically significant buildings that define who we are as a community. The lesson of the Brandrith Pill Factory complex underscores the importance of locally landmarking buildings before they are targeted for demolition. With this in mind, the HPC is refocusing its energies on proposals for locally landmarking historic structures in the village. At the moment, we are concentrating on a proposal to designate the former residents of St. Saint Warden Louis Laws, arguably one of the most influential prison wardens in U.S. history. Warden Laws' former residence now serves as the clubhouse for Hudson Point Condominiums. We've already met with the Condominium Association Board about the proposal. And we will be holding an information session open to all Hudson Point homeowners and the public here at the library, January 7th, 2020, 7:00 p.m. The HPC is also focusing its energies on providing assistance to owners of landmarked buildings that have fallen into various states of disrepair. For example, at our November 2019 meeting, we heard from representatives of the First Baptist Church, which is the high Gothic, high Victorian Gothic church between Highland Avenue and Main Street, situated within our Main Street Historic District. It's an iconic structure that has stood at the heart of our community for nearly 150 years. Its 100-foot-tall wood spire has seriously deteriorated. The church is seeking out grants to help finance the spire's rehabilitation, and the HPC has pledged to assist the church to help secure the necessary funding. With respect to HPC's mandate to increase public awareness about the importance of historic preservation, the HPC is currently considering a proposal to sponsor a high school essay contest in which students are asked to write about a landmark through a landmark-eligible structure in the village and the importance of the structure to our village's history. More generally, in 2020 and beyond, the HPC seeks to develop closer, more collaborative relationships with the other land use boards to help ensure that buildings adjacent to the historic districts and to individually landmark structures complement their historic context. This does not mean advocating for projects that mimic 19th century and early 20th century buildings. In fact, the HPC welcomes innovative and contemporary building designs. The library in which we're gathered today is an excellent example, a new building with an innovative design that blends into the overall historic context. So it is HPC's hope to work with the other land use boards to ensure that new buildings in areas of historic and architectural significance respect the scale, the form and materials of the older buildings that reflect our village's history. Thanks.
And Christine Sprout is going to be our impromptu speaker for the ZBA because the intended Chair is not able to join us. And while she's coming down, I'll just point out that Trustee Casada came to serve in village government, and village government first as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission before he ran for trustee, oh, so many years ago.
Thank you so much, Matt. Thank you. My name is Christine Sprout. I have served on the zoning board of appeals for one year now. Sue Donnelly is our Chair, but she, after the election, is going to be our new Town and Village Clerk. Robert Fritsch is going to be the village trustee now after his election. And so left on the board at this point is myself, Marlene Cheatham, and we have Antonio Hernandez, and I believe two other people are going to be coming in in January. So the board is changing over the past year that I've been on it. What is the zoning board of appeals? So we provide relief to homeowners, landowners, from the strict interpretation of the zoning code, the zoning laws. We also could provide an interpretation to an applicant who wants an interpretation of the zoning code. This past year, I would say that the majority of our applications have to do with homeowners seeking variances, sideline, rear variances, a lot of parking that they want to put in the front of their houses. It seems on our little village and towns and village streets, there's not a lot of parking. And there are a lot of apartments, so that is an issue. And there are a lot of buildings being purchased in the downtown area, being rehabbed, and they are becoming apartments and restaurants. So we are seeing some revitalization and growth in the downtown area that I think we should encourage. And I believe that what you might have to think about is parking, because eventually we are going to have to have places, not everybody takes the train, and we are going to have to have places for these cars to park when people come to and from work. So that's something that I think we have to consider in the downtown area. There's not a lot of parking and we have little, tiny little streets. And I would be remiss if I didn't compliment our very, very professional and knowledgeable attorney, Stuart Cahan. He is wonderful to have at our meetings and I don't think we could do it without him. I think that's about it. So I'm probably the shortest, but I didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare. But you do have a lot of new restaurants and revitalization of the downtown area that is, that's happening now. We've been approving a lot of variances in that area, so.
Great, thank you so much. And welcome. Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone. So now we'll open it up to any board members or anybody if you have questions about what the committee's work or anything that you heard here tonight, or if anybody wants to comment.
Overall, to me is, as I mentioned now before, I did, I've served for the HPC many years back. Originally, actually, I...
May I have your attention, please? The library will be closing in a half hour. Please note that the computers will be shutting down in about 15 minutes. Please save all your work.
So bless them to have my help. All right. Originally, actually, many years before that, actually, I wanted to be a member of the planning board. I thought it was very interesting to see what the planning board did. When I had an opportunity to become a member of the HPC, I said, this is the best place for me to be because of the architecture and the history of what our village had. And I was actually very fortunate enough to be part of what we did on the downtown. I was a part of the members that we actually came in front of the village board at that time and said, this is our historic district. And I had the opportunity to visit every single building and see what it was, you know, what the characteristics of our each building had. It was, it was a long process and I learned a lot through that. Since then, obviously, some members have changed and there's a different growth into that. And I promise you that I'll be more involved going forward. Next year, I'll be part, one of the liaisons for the HPC at that point. But I think they definitely do a lot of great work for us to keep the history within what we hope to be and what we actually, what we are, what the characteristics of our municipality, what the village is. Because I believe 2015, 2016, we actually were one of the best villages of the, the keep it history of the downtown was. And it was very, very cool to actually see that. It was the older boards, they do so much for us, not just for the village board, actually for the community that we live in. So I want to thank you very much for all the hard work that you guys do and all the time that you guys spend going to those meetings and putting time that usually you spend with your family. So I thank you for all the services that you guys do for us.
Anybody else like to comment or ask questions?
So I kind of want to echo the last part of that. Whether you're a resident who got involved because of your occupation or your talent or just a resident who wanted to give back, I say thank you. The fact that you give up your time to keep these entities actually, not just operating, but thriving, is really what has helped the boards and this board move forward. Just thinking out loud, really excited to see the possibility of the public art and corridor idea. I also wanted to comment on, as a fellow person in the creative world per se, it's very rare at local level to have opportunities to where you can actually have a hub and network where you actually live and make connections that you otherwise wouldn't make. So I just wanted to thank you for that. For the civilian complaint review board, my only suggestion after saying thank you for a great year is finding a way to better publicize or do some outreach as to who, you know, who you are, how it works and how to file a complaint. HPC, I had the opportunity to be the liaison for a couple of months, actually my first year when I came back on the board. year when I came back on the board, and I would like to see a way to address the perception that HPC is an obstacle in reality, it's more about the preservation as to who we are and why we're trying to preserve it, and a way for, because I don't know how to do it yet, but really how the board or the village administration can help people who haven't applied for a signed permit or basic items because they're just too scared of the process or the alleged process, or it being too difficult, or too many steps, or red tape, so possibly working with the chamber or working with, you know, other people who, you know, to make that process. Having flashback to two years ago when Mona's Coffee first opened up, and if it wasn't for trustee Levin, myself, and a few others, they would have not had the opportunity to really fulfill and follow through with actually getting a sign posted on that building. That's just an example. It's just some people and some of our Austin community members just need some help in understanding, and we need to know, the village needs to know, where we could be a little bit more clear on our applications and our processes and our fees. So besides that, I wanted to thank you to everyone, and happy holidays, and thank you for all your work.
Okay, so then, now's the moment you've all been waiting for, it's time for your certificates, and we have so many names to read and so many committees that I thought we could share the opportunity of reading all the names. So Jamie, which do you have first in your pile there? Because we have two different versions of alphabetized lists here. Oh, great. Oh, okay, so we'll start with the com-plan. So Guantel, I thought maybe you could read the names, and as, if you are on the committee that is having the names read, would you please come up and join us, and then stay up here, and eventually we'll all be up here and we'll take a big happy photo. So, yeah, would you want to read all the names, and then we'll just get up to you?
For the comprehensive plan, we have, all right, Alyssa Mantle, Rebecca Feige, Jeff Desparo, Omar Lopez, Roboran, Paulo Torres, and Chila Masen.
Thank you very much. Oh, I didn't hear you. Yes, we got you.
Thank you for your service.
All right, CRB, who did I suggest? Omar, we want you to do the honors of reading the names of those boards.
Okay, for the civilian police complaint review board, Sharon Ridergo, Kimberly Cohen, Osay Haseded, Pravodfo Moran, and Jane Ozer. Congratulations and thank you.
So next up, we have the Downtown Development Fund Council. Rick, they're not here, but you work so closely with them, would you do the honors of reading their names?
And just to be clear, we did meet, actually, with the village manager, so we had a great meeting, I know they're not here tonight, but that just reminds me that a lot of you all meet at least once a month, some of you many more times, and I wanted the public to be aware of that. I didn't really make a comment, but it reminded me that lots of meetings go on all the time, that's fantastic. Downtown Development is Katherine Corina, Andrew Kaplan, Matthew Kowetski, John Seltsman...
Joe D.
Joe D. Yeah.
Great, and Rick, keep going, it's EAC time.
Oh, EAC. I don't play favorites with the committees, I liaise too, but this has been a really interesting year because they were all relatively new in the past 18 months, so new is always challenging, right? So EAC is Erica Boach, I did never say your name right, I'm sorry, and I know she's gonna be seeing this later, Tom, you're right, Tom Bowden, right? Louise, Tino, Levani Dooley, Jessica Ullit, and Kate, who spoke earlier.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much.
So, the Ethics Group is really interesting, because if everything goes well, they never meet. So I don't know how often they met this year, because some of it is confidential, and we or the public don't even hear about it, so it's one of those way committees. I lost, there it is, okay, so Peter Madison, Jamie Cottell, Michael Carnes, Catherine, whose damn, I'm sorry, kids, Pete, I just can't, Crispian Chee is new to it, and Claude Tusk. And we do thank them for all their service.
The HPC, we have Adam Markovitz, Jay Philip, Fernanda, Alyssa Harlow, Julia Quinn, Dana White, and Catherine Wilson. Thank you very much for all the things you guys do. So we have the landlord tenant, we have Steve Dewey, Kevin Gerson, Julie Johnson, Maxine Lawrence, Gretchen Melo, that's all, thank you, Nancy Warren.
I need four.
And they need four.
All right, what's next? Oh, this is, I get to read this one, yay! Okay, so the Austin Arts Project Committee, I appointed myself to be the liaison, and I've really enjoyed the opportunity to work with them all year, and so Bradley Morrison, our Chair, who we heard from, Lindsay Francis, Michelle Contra Hergo, Jessica Irons, Wendy LeMang, who is with us tonight, Alan Lutwin, Peggy Manastra, Michael Morales, Mike Risco, and Henry Love, thank you to all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, that would save some posters.
Thank you, thank you.
Planning Board, we have Michael Valdotti, Michael Harrison, Robert Boker, David Chow, Alberto Fernandez, Jeff Desparo, and Jesus Laws.
Thank you.
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 Two lines or something.
Yeah, we're, we're.
I love that. Great, so this is rec advisory, Pat Mills, to you earlier, Tamara Bridgewater, Kurt Emrick, Tom McIntyre, Fern Quesada, and Tamara Underwood.
Okay, for the zoning board of, zoning board of appeals, congratulations, we have Suzanne Donnelly, Chair, Marlene Cheatham, Robert Fritsch, who is here, Antonio Martinez II, and Christine Sprout. Congratulations.
Two out of five.
It's all right.
Two out of five.
All right, Christine, thank you so much. Robert Fritsch, that must be the last one, thank you very much. So why don't we line up for a photo, use the stage, as our, get these chairs, these tables out of the way, so we can take a nice photo of the board and all of our volunteers?
None of us should stand up to the board.
They want us up here.
Two rows, half of us on the floor, half of us standing united, doesn't really matter where your height is.
Just a full of the stage.
Yeah. Stuart, would you come join us? Actually, anybody's welcome to join us. Karen, would you like to come join us? Captain, would you like to join us for a photo?
I appreciate it.
Come, man, you kept saying Stuart.
Sure, I asked her to please take a picture for me.
Here, here, Kenny.
Oh, no, don't take a picture.
How much time does he put in?
I'm good, I like y'all.
I know, I was like dead center.
We need some more people over here.
Thank you, it's organized.
May I have your attention, please? The library will be closing in 10 minutes. If you have any items you wish to check out, please bring them to the circulation desk now. The library will open tomorrow from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Thank you and have a good evening.
Make a smile, eyes open, smile.
I don't know, Kenny was the official photographer all of a sudden.
This is the only reason we came.
Can we look at Cheryl up?
There we go, you guys look beautiful.
All right.
Thank you, everybody. You got it, you got it.
Oh, Brad, put these in.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You did, you did.